Hello, everybody. It is 3 o'clock Eastern time. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Today is December 28th, Friday 2018, and this is a study session for Pacific Northwest History Semester One, and if you are in Quarter Two as well. So this is Mrs. Gonzalez, and we are just gonna go ahead and jump right in because we do not have any students joining us quite yet. I'm gonna go ahead, and for those of you that are watching the recorded version of this, I'm just gonna skip through all the initial things that you're supposed to do when you have a live session. So I'm just gonna go ahead and I'm gonna skip through that. This is the agenda. If students join us, we will definitely do the time for questions. If not, we'll just skip right through that, and you'll be able to send me a message if you have any questions. But we're gonna go through some final exam study tips, the first part of this study session, and then we're going to actually have some practice time where we'll take a look at questions, including a short response, a short essay to one of the final exam questions. So this could take anywhere from 30 minutes to one hour, depending if other students join in. Alright, so final exam study tips. There are 40 questions on the exam for this class, and there are, nice thing is that there's 39 multiple choice and one short essay question. So the multiple choice, they are true, false. We're gonna actually take a look a little bit later. Or they're just A, B, C, D. There's one maybe, or one or two that are all of the above type questions. Again, we'll take a look in the second half. And then, as far as a passing grade is concerned, 60% is what is expected on the final exam in order to pass the final exam and the course. And if you do not score at least a 60%, you have to retake it, and we're gonna talk about what happens next, when you need to retake it. What happens when you need to retake a final exam? But for now, know that the exam is worth 100 points. It's 10% of your overall grade. So if you are teetering on, you know, an 89 and a 90%, so B or an A, or anywhere on those kind of 79 to 80%, then you're going to be affected by this. 10% is a pretty big deal. It could either be the difference between one grade or the other. But if you're like kind of smack dab in the middle of a 95%, it shouldn't affect you too much. That's just one example. And then can you use notes? Yes, you can use one full page, front side only of notes. Many students ask, well, can I type up my notes? And for my classes, I say absolutely, yes, you can type up the notes. This is an online class. I don't see why you shouldn't be able to if, for some reason, your local advocate questions you. You can refer them to this video, say, hey, Ms. Gonzalez said I could type it up. So just one page, front side only. And of course, regular sized font. You cannot use like tiny, tiny little font to try to put as much as possible on one page. So I would say standard 12 to 14. Sorry, 12 point is a standard. So nothing smaller than a 12-point font. Alright, so what happens if you don't pass? Besides panicking, which you don't need to panic, you can actually take the final exam one more time. So you first, let's say on the first try, you pass great, you're done with the classes. But if you didn't pass on the first try, you get one more try. So you should really go back and review what you missed and what you need to study. And then you can also ask your teacher some clarifying questions. It's a good opportunity to do that. So if for some reason you don't pass, take it again, study for it, redo your notes. And then if you did that, and yet you still don't pass a second time, your teacher will work with you to complete what's called an alternate assessment. And an alternate assessment can be anything from writing an essay to a PowerPoint presentation to creating an exam. It's entirely up to your teacher. So your teacher will definitely notify you. They'll leave a remark on the final exam. Usually they'll send you an email or a chat message. So if you're, you know, if you're not sure if your teacher did that, just check the final exam feedback, and it should tell you what needs to happen, once you check that final exam feedback. Alright, there are some exam rules, and of course, there are deadlines. And that's the, the rules are basically that the final exam has to be taken in one sitting. So you can't start it, pause it, and then take it, you know, again, and you know, and restart again in two hours or the next day. It has to be all done at one time. And there's a time limit of 90 minutes. Use that 90 minutes. Use that to your advantage. You know, go through the exam, and then go back over anything that you questioned. Use those 90 minutes. You never know. Maybe within those 90 minutes, you're going to read a question that spurs an answer for another question. You can never tell. So take that 90 minutes for sure, especially if you don't feel like you did, like if you feel like as if you did not do well, definitely use that 90 minutes to go through any questions that you had trouble with. And then, as far as where do you take the final exam? How do you take it? If you're not sure yet, the best thing to do is to contact your academic coach. If you know absolutely nothing about final exams, and I put a number there on the screen, but basically, if you have a local advocate, it has to be taken at a meetup. If you do not have a local advocate, this is a little bit different for you. You're supposed to receive an email with a final exam. And then if you are a private school student, then you will have to take it with your proctor. So you'll need to set that up, and you can call that phone number on the screen to set up a proctor for your exam. There is a 30-day expectation, meaning that all final exams in all of your classes, not just this one, should be taken within 30 days of completing the course. And what that means is all of the assignments. So once you're done with all of your assignments, let's say you turn in the last one today. You have 30 days from today to take the final exam, and that serves many purposes. The first one is that it's gonna help you with memory retention. Do not wait the 30 days. It's a proven fact that the longer you wait to do something, take an exam, for example, the less you're going to remember. So make sure that, you know, my recommended recommendation is that you take it within one week of completing your last assignment. And you know, of course, after taking your notes and studying, take it within one week. And you might find that there are some course expiration date issues. So let's say it's after 30 days, and you haven't taken your final exam, but then, you know, you're ready to take it, but you can't get into it for some reason. That probably means your class expired, and you know, you were all ready to go, and now it's not available, and you're gonna have to wait till your next meetup to get that unlocked. So another reason to do it before the 30-day expiration date. It'll be less of a hassle on many different levels. And again, if you cannot access your final exam or have questions about the deadlines, contact your academic coach, and there's the number right there. Alright, final exam study tips. There is a study guide located at the end of the course. Once you have submitted all work, it will unlock the final exam and the final exam study guide. And it looks like this. You're gonna see there's a final exam study guide and a final exam, and you're gonna click on the final exam study guide. And we're gonna take a look at that right now. And this isn't what exactly what it looks like with the, what it's gonna look like on your screen, but this is the content that's in your final exam study guide. And I'm just gonna go over this briefly. This is a very general, it doesn't give you specific things that you need to look at. It's very general. So take that into consideration when you're looking at this final exam. It does not mean you should not look at it. You definitely should use it as one of many different ways to study for the final. And we're gonna talk about different ways you can study for this too, but very important. So this final exam study guide says that you have learned a lot about the earliest cultures in Washington, from the territory becoming a state to the reforms at the beginning of the 20th century. Before you take the final exam, review your unit quizzes and the activities you did, and that'll help you prepare. In addition, below are the learning objectives of the courses that you have covered. So these are the learning objectives. These are things that you needed to do throughout the class. And if you're lacking in any of these, then you need to go back and you need to reread, you need to read sections over again, or units or lessons, depending on where you feel like your weakness is. And so these are the objectives for the course, and I'm not gonna go through every single one, because that's something that you need to do. But it says analyze, one example is analyze multiple factors that have shaped major events in Washington State history. So you can think of any of the units, for example, how tribal relations have shaped the history, how technology, how certain industries, timber industry, technology. So what are the multiple factors that have shaped events in Washington State history? So make sure you read through these, and you could always take notes on them. So what I did was I copied and pasted, and then I put it into a Word document, and you can even just, you know, put your notes in here. You know, like trying to think of maybe Kennewick man. I remember that was one of the first things you learned in Unit One. Can it man was, and then you can put your notes there. So the things that you think were multiple factors that shaped major events in Washington State history. So just an example of how you can use the study guide. You don't need to use it that way. It's up to you entirely how you want to use that. Alright, so make sure you review all the assignments, just like it said in the study guide. Anything that you turned in, whether it's an essay, a project, or quiz, review those, because those are reviews of each of the lessons and the units, and those will help to refresh your memory. And also, of course, those are what the questions, a lot of those, the final exam questions are pulled from those types of assignments. And then redo any low-scoring work. Make sure you look for feedback. Redo anything below a 60% and see what you missed on all other work. So again, redo low-scoring work, look for feedback on that work, and then redo anything below a 60%, because what that means is if you have not mastered something, then that means that you have scored below a 60%. You're not, you're more than likely not gonna get it right on the test. So if you did not do well in the class, you're not going to do well in the final exam, which is why it's important that you at least get a 60%, which is considered passing. And a 60%, if you remember, is a D. You cannot pass with anything lower than a 60%. 59 and under is an F. Alright, so how do you check for feedback? That's a good question. A lot of students know how to do this, and some do not. So we're just gonna quickly go over how to check your feedback, and we're also gonna look at how to check what you missed on an assignment, which most students don't know how to do that, because it's a little bit of a, it's a little bit hidden. It's difficult to find how to see what you missed. But once you watch this video, this is going to help you tremendously. Anyway, so how to check for feedback from your class or from your dashboard, you're gonna see, for example, this student right here, Activity 7.3.1, you're gonna see that they receive feedback because there's this little chat bubble here. So you click on that chat, whoops, you click on the chat bubble, and then this will, then this will pop up, teacher feedback. That's gonna pop up. It's gonna say what the learning objectives are. But it's also gonna say, thank you for sharing your personal, for this one, thank you for sharing your personal views on this controversial topic. So this isn't a great example, because it is a perfect scoring assignment, but I just wanted to give you an example of how to check for your feedback. So that's how you do it. You look here on recently graded, or you can go into your class and look at the assignments, and then just click on that little chat bubble, and it'll, it'll, your teacher feedback will pop up. And usually, most teachers list the objectives first, and then it says, okay, well, thank you for sharing, or you need to work on number three, make sure you review question number four, etc. Alright. How to check what you missed? So you're gonna click on the graded assignment. So let's say you clicked on that marijuana legalization. Oh, actually, this example is prohibition laws and reflection. So click on the graded assignment, and then you're gonna see up here on the upper right-hand corner, you'll see a grade that you could retake it, that there's a comment. But you're gonna see this I, and that's information. So you're gonna click on that, and then the rest of the screen will pop up, and on the left, it'll give you this dropdown, it's not dropdown list, it's just a horizontal list of things that you can access. And you're gonna click on questions, and that, what that does, it brings up the questions that you, that were on the assignment, the ones that you missed, and the ones that you got correct. And then you're gonna scroll down. So over here, there's a scroll bar. And you're just gonna scroll down and see what you missed. And this person missed number three and four, and it looks like they just forgot to answer the question. So, you know, maybe they didn't, when they were doing the assignment, maybe they didn't scroll down far enough, or maybe they had to exit early. Different reasons students skip questions, or they just didn't understand the question. So they're gonna go back, and they're gonna be like, okay, so I missed this one. Maybe I need to go back to the reading, to the lesson, to the assignment instructions, and I need to see what, what happened. So that is how you look to see what you missed. And of course, you can always redo any low-scoring work. I encourage you, anytime you score below 60% to redo something, because that means you're not going to do well on the final exam. And if your teacher has not automatically set a retry, sometimes I forget, honestly, then message them and tell them, hey, can I get a retry on Activity 3.4.1, and they will reset it for you. Okay, we're gonna skip over questions. If you do have questions and you're watching this video, you can contact me through chat from your class. You can contact me through email, text message, or phone call, totally up to you how you wanna ask, like, ask me any questions. Alright, let's take a look now at the actual final exam questions. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna throw in some practice tips as we go through this, so that those of you who are not great test takers, which I'm not, I definitely get some anxiety when I take tests, and I spend way too much time on questions. These are some final exam practice tips. So we're gonna, you know, do a tip, do a question, a tip, question. And the first tip is, the first tip here is to read the entire question. You would be amazed. As an adult, I still do it sometimes. I get overexcited. I'm like, oh, I see keywords in this question, and so I'm gonna go ahead and answer it. Well, read the entire question first. Read a multiple choice, read a multiple choice question in its entirety before glancing over the answer options. So don't go right to the answer options. Just read the multiple choice question completely. Students often think they know what a question is asking before reading it, and jump straight to the most logical answer. This is a big mistake and can cost you dearly on multiple choice exams. Read each question thoroughly before reviewing answer options. So don't skim. A test is not a good time to start skimming, unless for some reason you are running out of time, and then maybe skimming is allowed, should be used, but no, do not skim through the actual questions, nor should you skim through the answers. Read everything thoroughly. And these test tips come from this website, Education Corner. If you're interested in more test-taking tips, you can go there. Okay, we're gonna jump right into a sample question from the test. The ones you're seeing today are, have been the most missed on the exam. They're not all. I haven't listed all of them, but I've picked some that have been the most missed. And so you're gonna see multiple choice mainly. This is a mainly multiple choice exam. So you're gonna see a question like this. Pick the combination of regions that make up what is known as the Pacific Northwest. So pick the combination of regions that make up what is known as the Pacific Northwest. So we're, there's some key words here. What are the key words? The combination of regions, and then the Pacific Northwest. So what makes it up? Is it A? I'm not gonna read every single state. B, yeah, I'll go ahead and do it. A is Washington, Oregon, Idaho, Montana, and Western California. Is it B? Washington, Oregon, California, Nevada, or Eastern Idaho, and Eastern Idaho? Is it C, Washington, Oregon, Northern California, Western Idaho, and British Columbia? Or is it D, Washington, Oregon, Southern California, Northern Idaho, or British, and British Columbia? My throat's starting to hurt a little bit, so I wanna try to keep talking to a minimum. So which one of those answers, which one is the answer? And if you need to stop and think about this for a minute, pause the video, and then unpause it where you're ready for the answer, because I'm going to give you the answer right now. So I'm gonna move on to the next slide, and the correct answer is C. And you can find this in Lesson 1.1, under Washington Geography. So if you didn't get that right, perhaps you need to go in and you need to review that lesson. Alright, sorry about that. I'm having a little issue here. Answer questions in your mind first. So maybe you don't wanna look at the answers right away after reading a question. Maybe you think, you know what, I think I know what the answer is. So it says, after reading a question, answer it in your mind before reviewing the answer options. This will help prevent you from talking yourself out of the correct answer. So usually, what they say for test-taking is that the first one that pops to your mind is usually the correct answer. I'm not saying it always, but it usually is. It's, don't doubt yourself, and you know, go with your gut instinct. Alright, here's another sample question from the test that is also multiple choice, and this is a little bit of a different topic. Number, number two asks, how, about how many Washingtonians identify as Hispanic? That's a little bit of a tough one, because they are, you know, these are very close. Each one is 100 to 150,000 of a difference. It's pretty tough. So about how many Washingtonians identify as Hispanic? Is it A, 100,000, B, 200,000, C, 350,000, or D, 450,000? Go ahead and pause the video if you wanna think about it, because I'm going to reveal the answer right now. Okay, the answer is D, 450,000, and you need to review Lesson 4.3 if the, if you did not get the answer correct. Alright, eliminating wrong answers. So if you're, it says to eliminate answer options which you're 100% sure are incorrect before selecting the answer you believe is correct. So let's say you're given, you know, multiple choice. And you know A and B are not the correct answer. Go ahead and cross that out, and then you just have C and D to deal with, as shown here. And then they crossed out D, so C must be correct. So even when you believe you know the right answer, first eliminating those answers you know are incorrect will ensure your answer choice is the correct choice. So eliminate all the wrong answers. Alright. Here is a sample question from the test as well, another multiple choice. But this one's fill in the blank, so it goes in the middle of a sentence. Number three, in 1989, the Centennial Accord recognized the blank of both tribal and state governments. So what did the Centennial Accord recognize? So if it's, if this were me, I would look at, okay, the year is 1989. We're talking about the Centennial Accord, and obviously, the Centennial Accord has something to do between tribal and state government. So this is government-related. This is definitely government-related. So here are my options, A, culture, B, sovereignty, or C, military. If you are not sure what sovereignty means, I would, if, so let's say you're in the middle of a test, and you're not sure what a word means, you can raise your hand and try asking your local advocate. They don't, it's not necessarily giving you the answer. Or you can ask them if you can look it up and see what sovereignty means, but this is definitely something that was covered in the class, and you should, and you should know. And if you don't remember what sovereignty means, then you need to go ahead and review one of the lessons. Anyway, so let's go ahead and reveal the answer. Answer is sovereignty. And I actually took a screenshot of where this is located, because this is in the video. Make sure that you're, you're listening and you're watching this, listening to and watching this video. And sovereignty is a community's independent rightful power and authority to govern, authority to govern itself. So make sure you review that, that lesson 7.2, and you watch the video. If you have any questions about sovereignty, or even contemporary tribal issues, which there will be questions on the tests about these contemporary tribal issues. Okay, true or false? Another type of question. Number three, Kennewick man has been locked away in a museum since 2005, and only very brief studies have been allowed on him. Is it true, A, or is it B, false? And the answer is true. If you are not sure, then you need to watch the video again on Kennewick man in Activity 1.2.1. Alright, from here on out, I believe I don't have any of the answers provided for the rest of the questions. So this is something that you'll need to look up. Yeah, so make sure that the questions that are coming up, you can find the answers. You can be ready for them once the final exam rolls around. And if you need help with them, you can always contact me as well. So answer the questions that you know first. If you're having a hard time answering a question, move on and come back to tackle it once you've answered all the questions you know. In other words, don't stay stuck on something. Make sure you keep moving. And if you don't know the answer, and it's been longer than you, you know, the, it's been a long period of time since you've been stuck on that, you need to move on. It's just not worth missing so many other ones that you might have the answer to because of one question. Sometimes, answer easier questions first can, oh, sorry, sometimes answering easier questions first can offer you insight into answering more challenging questions. Another quick study tip is read every answer option, just like we talked about. Read the answer, the question thoroughly. Read every answer option thoroughly before you choose a final answer. So don't just assume you know it. Make sure that you, you look through all of the possible answers. It says, this may seem like a no-brainer to some, but it's a common mistake many students make. If you quickly assume you know the correct answer without first reading every answer option, you may end up not selecting the best answer. Alright, so the conflict, here's question number four. The conflict between Washington and the Makah tribe is over. So there is a conflict between Washington and the Makah tribe. We've talked about other tribes, but specifically the Makah tribe. What is the, the problem over? What is the conflict? Is it A, fishing rights, B, whaling rights, C, crop rights, or D, casino rates? Oh, I guess there is an answer. Sorry. It's over whaling rights. Make sure you read Lesson 7.2, again, contemporary tribal issues. Alright. All of the above and none of the above. I have not seen a none of the above on this exam. I have seen an all of the above, but they're very few. And when you encounter these, do not select all the above, if, all of the above, if you are pretty sure any of the answers provided are incorrect. So the same applies for none of the above. If you're confident that at least one of the answer choices is true. Alright, so again, for all of the above, if you're sure one of the answers provided is not correct, do not choose all of the above. Alright. Here's an all of the above sample question. Number five, what else was lost and/or destroyed because of the Great Seattle Fire of 1889? Hello, do we have somebody joining? Okay, we'll just keep going. Alright, so is it A, 2 million rats, B, 5,000 jobs, or C, all of the above? So what else was lost and/or destroyed because of, because of the Great Seattle Fire? Alright. So what happens when it seems like there's two correct answers? Well, when you have two, when two answers are correct in a multiple choice question with an all of the above option, then it's probably the correct choice. So again, make sure that when you look at something and you're like, okay, those are definitely, those two answers are correct. Oh, I have all of the above. Choose all of the above option. Here are some other sample questions from the test that are some of the most missed. I'm not gonna go over each one. You are more than welcome to pause this video and look for the correct answers. So make sure that you do pause this, and you review those questions, and you contact me if you need help finding the correct answer, if for some reason you cannot find it. So when you go to look for these answers, look at your units, look at the names of the units, and try to match the topics here with the topics in the names of the units. So like, one, this one talks about World War II. Okay. You know, you want the unit that discusses that time period in Washington history. An explorer, that's early, so make sure that you, you know, look at earlier Washington history. Alright, we're gonna move on to the last part of this review, which is the short answer, short essay questions. So the nice thing about the two possible questions on this final exam that are short answer is that you've already have done that. You, you pretty much have already created answers for these when you went and did the activities for that particular lesson. So if you look at number one, it says, in your opinion, is investing in sustainable energy industries good for the state? Why or why not? You've already answered that question in that unit on energy in Washington. You've already answered that question in that unit on energy in Washington. So what you could do is you could review, you review your answer. Or if you did not score well, or if you skipped it, then go back and make sure that you do it. If you want to prepare again, if you want to redo it, or you just want to prepare for this final exam, look and see, how many questions are there here? Well, let me see, in your opinion, is investing in sustainable energy industries good for the state? There's question one, why or why not? Question two. So make sure that you're looking to see, okay, how many parts are there to this question? And then I have some sentence starters for you here. You can start it by saying, I believe in investing in sustainable energy industries is good for the state because, or if it's not good, you can say it this way. And then here's a tip, write two to three fully developed sentences. A fully developed sentence is not just, I think it is good. Now, a fully developed sentence says why you think it's good. You know, you're giving examples to support your argument. You're giving examples from the reading, from observations in the news. So make sure you're writing two to three fully developed sentences. Same for the other question. This question is, what do you think should be Kennewick man's fate? Should scientists be able to study him thoroughly? Or should he be given back to the tribes to be buried and why? So how many questions are there here? And what do you think should be the, be Kenick man's fate is one. Should scientists be able to study him thoroughly? Or should he be given back to the tribes to be buried? That's two, and why is three? So same thing for this one. Make sure you're writing two to three fully developed sentences. And give examples to support your argument. All right, if you have any questions about the final exam or study sessions or even any of the social studies classes, please make sure that you contact me. Here's my contact information. Those are my pups, Boomer is the black dog and Sky's a black and white dog. Anyway, there's my information, my phone number and my texting number, my email address. And of course, like I said, you can contact me from your class through the chat system. And my office hours are Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM Eastern Time. So I hope this was a useful study session for you. And I look forward to seeing you in a future study session, whether it's for Pacific Northwest history or any other social studies class. All right, look forward to seeing you then. Bye bye.